Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education, July 21st, 2014, 7:00 PM. Mr. Tepper, if you please call, roll.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Here.
Dr. Heiss.
Here.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Fruman.
Here. You all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The safety exits. There's one to my right, your left, here, one all the way in the back of the room, and then the two to your immediate right and to my left. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Absolutely.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Also, that includes a consent agenda 9.1 to 13.2, just so we're all on the same page there.
Got it, thank you.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bissinger.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. Approval of the minutes of the Board Policy Committee from June 9th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on June 19th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. And if we can also approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 23rd, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman.
Yes, thank you. Lots of meetings. Correspondence, 4.1, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fruman. What I'd like to report is we received a couple of different correspondences, and one I'm very excited about, that we received information back regarding our advanced placement testing results at the high school, at both of our high school levels. This is a concentrated effort at both high schools over the last couple of years to encourage students to take some more rigorous courses and to, you know, to take those tests. Those tests are so important, and many of the universities, especially in the state of Ohio, if you happen to get a score of a 3, 4, or a 5 on those tests, that credit will actually transfer right from that, our high school, straight into the college, which is very, very good. But the results that I got are just amazing, the fact that, just to give you some perspective, in 2011, just three years ago, we had 663 tests that were taken at both of our high schools. Now, again, not every, some students will take more than one AP course at a time, so the number of students were a little bit less than the 663. In 2014, because of the efforts of the phenomenal high school staffs, as well as our administration, our total is 1,519, 1,519 tests taken. And what's even as exciting is that of those 1,519 tests that were taken, nearly, I mean, right at 80 percent of our students received the college equivalent scores of 3, 4, or 5. Just really is just a testament to both of the high schools. So I was just very excited to share that information with the board and our community. We have 23 AP classes, I believe, at this time, and we're looking at actually increasing that number as we move forward at each of our high schools.
Excellent.
Okay. Another piece of communication, I just wanted to share, that I received information regarding our summer professional development for our teaching staff. And again, we have such a quality of teaching staff here at Forest Hills, you know, when the summer months roll around, they really do step up in regards to making sure that they are on top of their game. In the first sessions of our, which happened in early June, right after school was out, we had 150 people attend different courses and different PD that was provided by us alone, let alone what was provided outside of our district. There were over 669 workshops that those 150 people attended to better prepare them for next year. Coming before school begins in August, so here in early August, we will have a second round of PD opportunities for our staff to participate in, as well as other very significant PD opportunities in the area that many of our teachers have signed up to do. They do this at their own time, and in many cases, their own cost. So I just want to say thank you to the staff for all the hours and hours of dedication they give over the summer months to their own professional development. And if I would, just another announcement or so. Anderson Days, and I could say it's a communication, since I've been getting information regarding Anderson Days, but Anderson Days is this weekend, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. The Forest Hills, as in the past, will have a booth to represent us at Anderson Days. And lastly, communication that's going out to all of our parents anyways, as school does begin, coming up here in mid, a little bit, part of latter August, actually, school begins on the 20th, on Wednesday, August the 20th, with professional development occurring the 18th and the 19th for our staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Mr. Tepper.
I have a question. Dallas, I heard a rumor that Lindsay Steltzer had 60 AP math students and all 60 scored fives. Is that true?
Actually, you're really close. I think she had 64, if people take that. I could be wrong, I'm just saying, of those Lindsay's AP Calc class, of the 60-plus students, all but four received fives, and the other four received fours.
That's pretty amazing.
Probably one of the top percentages in the country.
That's really unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
Item 4.2, Procedures for Public Commentary. As many of you know, this is not a public meeting, but is a meeting held in public. We nevertheless welcome and encourage comments from our community. If you wish to address the board, please fill out one of the green cards, I've got quite a few up here already, and we will address you at the appropriate time in the meeting. Given the number of cards that we have in our full agenda, we're going to limit you to three minutes this evening, and I will shuffle the cards up here and call them randomly. Item 5.1, Candidate for Graduation, always an exciting part of the meeting, Mr. Broadwater.
Is Grace here? Grace, I can do this, I'm going to give you the honor, since I'm going to be recommending it. Board of Education, I'm indeed pleased and honored to present to you Grace Goine, a graduating senior from Anderson High School. So Grace, if you'd like to come up this way, I'd like to present this diploma to you. Congratulations. I have to recognize the...
Do we have a motion?
I move that we grant a diploma to Grace Goine.
Second. Mr. Tepper.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. And if her parents could also stand and be recognized.
Parents and grandparents.
Oh.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. And yes, Grace, you may leave. It's always an honor to know that these students work so hard, and so many times that they may just be just an hour or two, or a credit short at graduation, or something else that may have happened along the way, then they work really hard. And again, this is just a few weeks after that time, and that Grace was able to finish her high school requirements. So again, super, thank you.
We are now at public commentary. I have six cards, and I've shuffled them, we'll limit it to three minutes. In advance, if I cut anybody off, it is not my intent to be rude, it is my intent merely to help us get through the meeting. So we have seven cards, and the first will be Maria Kelly.
My name is Maria Kelly. I'm not really comfortable standing up here. I'm used to convincing people to vote yes for Forest Hills. So even though I considered this plan ill-advised, I tried not to care, I tried to step away and let it all shake out, but I've lived here my whole life, I was a levy chair, so I realized I do care. And so, it's not a secret that I'm not a fan of this plan. It's dangerously vague, where are the details? It doesn't save any money from the operating budget, and if we do keep nine buildings, will we just keep having to make more and more cuts, like we've already seen? It's basically the same plan that was unsuccessfully presented to the voters last year. However, I'm not here to debate the plan, I'm here to question standards and process. The board presented the findings of the OFCC report to the public in order to convince the community that our buildings are in bad shape, but then they abandoned the process. The lack of process is troublesome. I researched other school districts and found districts across the country about their processes, and found there's a common theme. They all included educators and community, and began with looking at curriculum. This prompted me to dig further, only I realized I didn't have to dig at all. It's all there on the OFCC website. To begin, there is an Ohio School Design Manual, which sets minimum standards for building the state's facilities. And to those of you who keep asking, what does 21st century learning space look like? It's all right there. It was developed by the OFCC staff in cooperation with architects and nationally-recognized educational planners. And I'm not sure how this Board of Education thinks they know better than nationally-recognized educators. It sets minimum standards for quality for the state's educational facilities. We are telling our voters that our children don't deserve the amenities that the state deems minimum. It makes no sense to ignore OFCC minimum standards. An overwhelming majority of the districts in the state of Ohio are adhering and even exceeding the state design, the Ohio School Design Manual. And yet, one of our board members called these minimum standards a burden. In addition, there's a standalone guide for districts to use for facility planning. The guide outlines the process from the very beginning, all the way through the design phase of the facility project. The pre-planning portion of this guide says, quote, "Although the Board of Education provides the directive to pursue a facility, securing input from all stakeholders has proven to be a vital step in the successful implementation." Quote, "Both a leadership committee and an educational planning committee should be formed to complete the planning process." Instead, in our case, the Board of Education made it very clear that they were the only committee. They held meetings, but they were meetings held in public and not public meetings. With this guide is a complete planning and process template that allows the school district to plan for their own community needs.
Ms. Kelly, thank you.
Nearly eight months ago, I stood here and talked about the incredible opportunity that I saw in front of the Forest Hill School District. At the time, I talked about how our youngest will be the class of 2030, and how I hoped that the plans that we made today would pave the way for her success. I am now pregnant with a class of 2033, and a lot's happened since then, and unfortunately, as I stand here now, it pains me to say that I don't believe that the plan up for consideration does the things that we need it to do. It's something, but I don't believe it's the something that we need. I was fortunate to be a part of the superintendent's steering committee for the past eight months. I witnessed the facilities process from start to finish, from the inside out. And instead of starting with the guiding principles, like those in our district's strategic plan, we kind of worked backwards. The board and superintendent said there was room for compromise and cooperation, yet today, there's not much evidence of that. We're kind of back where we started. They started with a determination to keep nine buildings that we struggled to afford, and that's exactly where we ended up. At the start of this process, you said you'd create a master plan that would take us decades into the future. This plan fixes current issues, but it's not forward-thinking. You said you'd consider cost savings and sustainability. This plan saves nothing, and if anything, over time, it costs more. You said you'd consider 21st century learning trends. This plan makes no changes to educational systems and delivery, leaves less money for programs and innovation, and it does not give equitable treatment to all Forest Hill students in all Anderson Township neighborhoods. You said you'd explore community partnerships, and we heard about that in the beginning, but there's not much to show for it. This plan is nearly the exact same plan that failed last May, and it's another missed opportunity. It's a higher price tag without any added value, educationally or economically for this community and for the future generations of Anderson Township. I believe in Forest Hills, maybe too much sometimes, and I really respect the board's determination to do something. I've gotten to know you all over the past eight months, and that is the one thing we all say that we agree on. However, I believe doing something at the expense of future generations, my children, will do more harm than good.
Thank you. Forests Heiss.
I too don't like to be up on this side, I like to be over there, but, you know, getting the arrows at you. I know I'm going to be cut off, so just we'll go with that. Just great to see everybody. I'm here to say a few things. One is, we're all in this together. We all support the schools, we all want best for our kids. Those are premises that we begin with, okay? Having been on the board for a few years, and having gone through this process, this board and this community have, I think, been, you know, paralysis by analysis. I've been looking at school plans for 30 years, I've been looking at, ever since the NAGL once passed, we've been starting looking at. This board has a window of opportunity, a very narrow window of opportunity. The state of Ohio has designed that every three to four years, you have to come back for an operating levy. That's a given. When you look at the recent elections, the state of Ohio is not going to do anything for Forest Hill School District, except for putting more mandates on you. They're not going to give you more money, they're not, you know, 20 years ago, they said, well, hey, we're 14 years out, they'll pay for part of our schools. They're not going to do that. They've also put limits on what the board can raise, as far as millage. So, hey, if you want one high school, if you want four new elementaries, it's not possible under the current law. This board has to look at whatever the law is at this time, all the information. What happened last time in a levy is that it felt like it wasn't fully vetted. If nothing's been vetted this time, I don't know what else can be left. They've answered, they've looked at every question, they've outraged. All you've had an opportunity, this community's had an opportunity to look both ways, upside down, inside out, whatever. They have a proposal before them, and this is something that I think the whole community, the whole board, the whole community should get behind, including parents. If there's a certain segment that wants one system and isn't going to pass, you gotta think of, what is the alternative of not doing anything? Not doing anything, we're going to be back here 10 years from now. We've got a first-class school district, we've got first-class kids, we've got a first-class D, I don't even know how to turn this off. We have a first staff, we have a first-class staff, and a first-class administration, but yet we have second-class buildings. I don't believe the Ohio community, whatever is on school district, and they want minimum standards. When we were looking for NAGL, I didn't want minimum standards. I wanted standards that fit our district, at our time, with our money. So that situation is, I will trust the board and their decisions tonight, whatever they do, I'd urge the community to get behind it, because I go back to my premise, we're in this together, we're all in this together. It's going to be a hard sell. It's always a hard sell when you go in there. This plan at least offers something for everybody, all the kids, and it benefits the kids. That's all I ask people to look for. What's going to happen when we don't have a building?
Mr. Heiss.
When we have that?
Thank you.
I knew that was going to be it. Thank you very much.
Feel like somebody's going to strike me down for cutting. Kristen Meyer.
Good evening. I think you can tell I'm passionate about this as well, I think I've been up here at least three times over the last several meetings, so first off, I want to thank you for the diligence and work that you've put into the facilities decision. I've attended nearly all of the special facilities meetings since they began last spring, or whenever it was, I'm not sure, and I believe that the current proposed plan makes logical and sound financial sense. It addresses the desires of the majority of the community. It upgrades all of our facilities and addresses the current issues with them. It's fiscally responsible and within the constraints that we are under. Although I'm a veteran Forest Hills girl, as you know, I came into this process with a very open mind and no real opinion on the configuration of the schools, or how to best address the facility's situation that I felt was in great need. No other proposal that I have heard has convinced me that it is a better option. You have not showed me what I gain out of any other option. My greatest concern as a parent of three kids in the Forest Hill Schools today is the quality of their education. I do want the facilities addressed and upgraded, but I don't need fancy and new, and I firmly believe that it's not necessary for the excellent education that I'm after. Just look at what's been happening in our schools to date, if you need any proof of that. I would much rather spend as little as possible fixing and upgrading our facilities to acceptable standards, i.e. air in all of them, roofs that work, et cetera, and focus our dollars and resources on actually improving their educations through things like additional teachers and smaller class sizes. I don't believe that any facilities improvements can replace more one-on-one interaction between teachers and students. One of the arguments I've heard against the current plan is that some believe we need to meet OFCC standards in order to provide greater STEM capabilities, but I very much disagree with this. I've worked as an engineer at GE Aviation in some of the highest tech areas of our field for over 16 years, and I can tell you that we are not fancy. Many of our engineers work in basements with no windows, or in manufacturing shops that are hot, dirty, and smelly. It has not stopped us for one minute from becoming one of the preeminent technology companies in the world. Brand new is not necessary to reach the STEM standards we need for our children's futures. I urge you to move forward with your current plan. We need to fix our facilities issues once and for all, and move on to bigger and better things. I'm here to help however I can to get a bond issue passed, and support our Forest Hill Schools and my children's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Nummy Ojin.
Good evening, I'm Nummy Ojin. I am a lifetime, excuse me, lifetime Anderson Township resident. I have three kids currently in the district. I did spend nine of my years of education in the Forest Hill School District as well. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I just have a couple of quick comments and a couple of questions about the process and about the proposed plan. First, the comments. The plan as presented to me is not a master plan for this district. Status quo does not equal master plan to me. A master plan should reflect a vision, and it should include 21st century learning and what that means to our students. So far, we have not seen that. An effective facilities plan should reduce overhead, and it should allow the district to operate more efficiently. I think the current plan, as it is proposed, offers zero reduction in overhead and in operations costs. I wonder how the board can ask the voters for $103 million for a plan that does not provide line-by-line descriptions or cost estimates for the work to be done in each of the individual buildings. I wonder if a detailed construction sequencing plan for each building has been developed. In looking at what Merrimott Schools did, it cost them $1 million just to provide for the students during that construction, to have those facilities available for the students to make it, you know, impact them as little as possible. That was for nearly 1,000 students. If we do this here, that's going to affect, about seven times as much could be budgeted for, just for those items, and I don't think the board has considered that. The cost estimates and the scope of work proposed should at the very least be vetted by a third-party expert. For example, the proposed plan indicates that Wilson will be built for 700 students, and it will be built for approximately $15.5 million. That's nearly 20 percent less than the state minimum budget for a school of that capacity. I wonder if it has occurred to the board to question, I know certainly for some of you it has, or at least to verify the numbers that were put forth by one consultant hired to give those cost estimates. Then what happens when Wilson goes over budget? Where is that money going to come from? What other schools are going to be affected? I think we all agree Wilson is a problem, but I don't think the other schools should have to pay for that, and the other students, it should be laid on their backs. That's not fair. It's success for all students. I think considering these questions and so many others that everyone's raised, I think it's not time to move forward with this. It's time to regroup, it's time to look at it with new eyes, start the process over. Maria had some really good points about how that process can happen and how it can be followed, and I think that's what needs to happen next. I don't pretend to be an expert on any of this, and certainly people who know a lot more than I do can share their appointment, their opinions, but that's how I feel about it, and I'll go forward from there with those thoughts, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greta Schmidtire. All right, did I not get the name close enough? Greta? Oh, there she is. Hello, Greta.
My name is Greta Schmidt, and we are students at Wilson Elementary. We love our neighborhood school, and we love our teachers, but we need a new building. Last spring, our leaky roof set off a fire alarm during a thunderstorm. We had to stand outside in the cold rain while it lightninged and thundered. It was really scary. We want to go to Wilson and not worry about it being a rainy day. Please give us a chance to make that happen. We have been waiting a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah McGough.
She adjusted the mic for me, thank you. So I'll be short. We've talked about this enough ad nauseam, and I think the survey has spoken for itself, so I think we know where to move forward. To the board, thank you for your commitment and leadership to our facilities crisis, and for engaging the community for researching options and for listening. I support the plan you're proposing, and I will vote yes and encourage others to do so, because our children and our community deserve it. We can't wait, we need to go now. This is what's right, this is what the community has said they will support. Tonight and moving forward, I encourage all of you, all of you, to come together and champion this plan the majority of the community has publicly supported. As we move forward, continued success for all students, I want to address a comment that's been constant in discussions. It implies that our district is afraid of change. Well, realize that change, whether big or small, is successful when the right scale of it is applied. Change is successful when it's applied without disrupting what has been proven successful. And the community has told us that we don't need to tear down buildings and create new to realize the change we need in the district, and the change that the community will support. So I say, trust the survey, trust the community, trust and support our board members who have done this work, and support the change at any scale and at the right size. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for taking the time to come out and share with us your opinions. Item 7.1, District Updates, from Dr. Jackson.
I kind of pushed those all together, so to speak, in my last report.
All right. Item 8.1, Review of Board Priorities. In January, or maybe it was the 1st of February, we had a work session, and the board set its priorities for the year, and we agreed that we would revisit these in roughly July or August, so here we are in July. You all should have received a copy of our board priorities, which is also included in the board materials, so as we had agreed we would do, we're going to review those priorities this evening. that's been constant in discussions. It implies that our district is afraid of change. Well, realize that change, whether big or small, is successful when the right scale of it is applied. Change is successful when it's applied without disrupting what has been proven successful. And the community has told us that we don't need to tear down buildings and create new to realize the change we need in the district and the change that the community will support. So I say, trust the survey, trust the community, trust and support our board members who have done this work, and support the change at any scale and at the right size. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for taking the time to come out and share with us your opinions. Item 7.1, district updates, from Dr. Jackson.
I kind of pushed those all together, so to speak, in my last report.
All right. Item 8.1, review of board priorities. In January, or maybe it was the 1st of February, we had a work session, and the board set its priorities for the year, and we agreed that we would revisit these in roughly July or August. So here we are in July. You all should have received a copy of our board priorities, which is also included in the board materials. So as we had agreed we would do, we're going to review those priorities this evening. Would anybody care to begin discussion of our board priorities?
If I might, if we look at number one, district strategic plan, and that says, we are actually living in the second year of the district strategic plan. And as of this summer, what we've done with our administrative retreat, as well as we have another one planned, the DLT, a district leadership team meeting on the 4th of August, is to begin to review our strategic plan. There are some pieces of that that we have accomplished, which is phenomenal, and there are some other pieces that we do need to tweak, but it's still a fairly good, living, breathing document. So if the board chooses to give us just a little bit more time as an administrative team to do that, then we can bring back that information to you and then get your input.
Susan, do you have that, that you could put up on the screen for us, and the community maybe could follow too? Excuse me?
In the past, we had a lovely scribe that's sort of been, are you doing that right now?
I think the purpose was just to see where we stand on all these priorities and what action is taking place and what needs to take place, and then maybe even review to see if we want to add any, because I, for one, have one that I'd like to add to goal one.
Right. I spent some time reviewing this, and I was aware in the strategic plan that Dr. Jackson and his staff have been reviewing at the recent retreat, and we will look forward to report back on that. Item one is, as it's being loaded up on the screen, it's, the item is teaching and learning, improving academics. And looking at the items that are listed here, I do think that's something that we've, there it is.
Oh, that's nice. There it is.
Do we pay for that?
It's a priority, but...
I do think that item one is something that we've been working on throughout the year. We've heard fairly regular reports from Dr. Jackson, from Natasha Adams, from Betsy Ryan, Tammy, about, you know, what's being done with the teaching and learning, improving academics. Of course, you know, most recently, the report of the increase, I mean, the more than doubling of the number of AP exams that have been taken, not just at one, but at both high schools, and the results we're getting. I do note there's a couple of things that we could focus our little, a little more attention on. We haven't discussed at all, and I know why, it's because all our time's been devoted to facilities. We haven't discussed at all the consideration of lengthening the school day over the year, which is something at some point we ought to discuss. But for the most part, I think we have continued to focus on the items in that first goal.
That means the students are safe next year, right? Since we started three weeks?
Right.
Four weeks?
Four weeks.
Something else the administrative team's been doing, especially, I've seen Natasha and her staff is going to the Forest Hills Council of PTAs when something new is coming out, to explain to sort of that leadership group what's going on and the education flows in there. I think they even get, sometimes, I think I mentioned this to Dr. Jackson and Natasha at one point, sometimes I think they're even, they get as much or more information than we do. So I think that's a good thing for all of us to get, and that's to be clear.
I'd like to suggest that we add one to goal one, and that is that the board request a plan to, from the administration, to move our state evaluation measures up to the point where we would wind up with an A rating for 14, 15. That's...
We're really, really close, for those of you who don't know, super duper close this year.
1.6 or something like that?
So it's not unattainable, but...
Yeah, last year didn't matter. It was just a prototype or something, but it's something I think that we ought to have on the table, just simply to ask, you know, what is the plan to get us there?
My only concern with that is, I think goals, that is definitely a goal, but that would be something, as we have done our evaluation, as we have rolled out and now have our evaluation processes in place for a couple of years now for Dallas and Rick, that might be something that the state could talk about for its goals for next year. I don't know that it needs to be our board priorities. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, that's why I said request a plan. It's not our plan. We need to request a plan. That's why we've...
Any more discussion? I don't want to belabor these. What I want to do is review.
Yeah, right.
The next one, evaluation program. I know we, as Julie's just said, we've done a really good job of continuing to implement the superintendent treasure evaluation system, and I know Dr. Jackson and his team have spent a considerable amount of time working on the implementation of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. I, and we've continued to support it. I don't know beyond that whether...
Well, we just finished our first year of the Ohio Principal Evaluation System, and we'll be implementing our Ohio Teacher Evaluation System this year. We piloted that system with a number of different teachers in all of our buildings, and so we'll be moving ahead with that. So I think that's a good one for the board to continue to support as we move along. And as early as, I think Randy might report on this a little bit later on this evening, the legislation, new legislation, again, you always have a moving target, but they've made some changes in the teacher evaluation system yet again.
Any other discussion on that item? I think similarly, the next one, technology. Christine McCormick and her staff have really done a great job. They brought us, you know, various contracts, and I know they've done a good job implementing and increasing the infrastructure for that computer. I haven't heard complaints this year that it's not working, and so it sounds like we're getting there.
Actually, there's a quick update, and it was in your packet most recently, about this upcoming school year will be our first year of a total one-to-one at the middle school and the high school level, and very close at the elementary level. So we're really pleased and proud to move forward with that plan.
The next one is the financial goal. Any other discussion on that? Anything we ought to be tweaking? Next one is the goal two, the financial, and I think that we've really done a pretty good job on this, although we can continue to do more. And you see the collaborative partnerships with the other school districts and the governmental entities. Ray, in particular, and Rick have brought to us opportunity after opportunity where we've collaborated with other districts, partnerships, governmental entities. We've talked a lot about collaboration with the trustees, both Anderson and Newtown, and while we've talked, we've yet to actually move forward on something truly collaborative. I hope with the new facilities plan, that'll give us another opportunity to do so, but I think that's something that needs a little bit more focus. Yes?
Absolutely.
And I know from Rick's, our treasurer's, recent report, that we've made considerable progress on that next item, continuing to work toward extending the life of current levy. We had an underspend, and, well, I won't take your thunder too much, but we've got a report. We got a good underspend in expenditures, what was it, 2.7%? Revenue was a little bit higher than we anticipated, and I think we're gonna, looks like we're on pace to extend that levy. So good progress there. And then, of course, the next one, consider a plan to pass facilities. I hope we're there this evening. Other discussion on that item? Turn to the next one. In January, or if it was early February, maybe, when we built our priorities for the year, we put as a board priority, and we all agreed, to target November 4th, 2014, for a ballot issue for both baitings and bond levies. We've spent seven months, nearly seven months, working on that, and I think we're going to be there. School partnerships, I know that's something that we have continued to do to great success. I don't know if there, we've heard month after month of what we're doing there, and Dallas' outreach.
I'm just really pleased, too, in that regard, that we've brought on the Circle Program, that has really extended our reach into the community, as well as outside our community, finding new partnerships, new people that, and different business opportunities, or business groups that can come in and provide lots of different opportunities for our students. I'm packing a meeting this week with one of the local banks to more formalize a partnership with them, so I think we're moving ahead in that direction.
Communications is an area we've made some progress, but I still think there's a lot of work left to be done. I think the Forest Hills today, the newsletter that's come out, has been a great step in the right direction. I've heard a lot of comments on that. We're on volume two. I don't know when volume three is due, but I think that's been really great. And of course, the hiring at our last meeting, the approval of...
Erica Daggett?
Erica Daggett.
Who is with us today?
Is she? Erica, where are you? Can we have Erica stand up?
Apes of Erica, would you please?
Erica, welcome. So we've made great progress. Erica, where we haven't made the best progress, we'll look to you to help us. We've got work to do, and the matter of communicating with the community is just, I know it's difficult. We'll look to you to help us figure out how to do that better. Other discussion on that item? Board presence. We all split up our schools, and we were liaisons with the schools. I know sometimes I didn't do what I should have. It's tough getting to so many meetings. Hopefully, maybe you all did a little bit better than I did. I hope to do better next year. We did regularly attend the PTA console meetings, SAGA meetings, and if the rest of us didn't, I know Randy has frequently attended both the Anderson Township and Village and Newtown trustees meetings. So I think we've done that. What we didn't do is submitting the guest columns on a regular, scheduled basis to local news entities, as we talked about. That's maybe something we can focus on a little bit more. I'm willing to accept the responsibility for that, but we have been meeting a lot on other issues. Other discussion on our board priorities? Maybe we can look at this again, rather than waiting till the end of the year, October, maybe?
When do we discuss Randy's suggestion, or how does that get on the page, or off the page, or?
I think it's on the page now. I mean, unless...
Do we have a consensus agreement?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie?
Oh, a plan by the end of 2000, a plan for this year. That's what you said. Yeah, I think that's, I think Dallas would be...
I think there's two ways to do it. I think, I think your suggestion, Julie, was a good suggestion, that'd be part of my goals, and work through that and share the plan, rather than part of the strategic plan is always to improve academics. There's a lot to the state report card, lots of different moving pieces, but I think that we, and we have in the past, can put together a plan for specifically the performance index.
You know, one thing we didn't mention, and you're going to have to help me with the title of the document, with the document that supplemented what we do and what districts like us do. What's in that document?
The quality profile. Our quality profile.
Quality profile. We forgot to mention that, and that was something I think that was very beneficial as a supplement to what the state's making us do.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And we're in the process of revising that for the 2013-2014 school year for moving forward. That actually will be released in early September. So actually, Eric and I met today a little bit, along with Natasha and the rest of the cabinet, to talk a little bit about the quality profile and moving forward with our efforts there.
Other discussion regarding the board priorities? Well, item 8.2, resolution determining to proceed with bond issue and permanent improvement tax levy for November 4th, 2014. You all have a copy of that resolution. I have a motion. I move to approve the resolution to proceed with the bond issue.
Second.
Discussion.
Just to clarify, it's $103 million bond issue, as well as a half mil permanent improvement levy to be on the ballot November 4th, 2014. This is the second of the two major resolutions to get an issue on the ballot, and needs to be approved and submitted to the Department of Tactation by next Tuesday, so that's the nuts and bolts.
Since nobody's jumping to the start, I will start. The, this has been a long process. It has been a process of not seven months, but 18-plus years. I bring that up. Many people in this room have been on multiple facilities committees over the course of decades now. Unfortunately, despite all of those committees, nothing has ever got to this point. It never got to a point where we actually make a difference in our district. The buildings that we have are the same buildings we had in the '70s, obviously, with the exception of Nagle. Everyone here, you wouldn't be here if you didn't care, okay? I mean, it's a, and anyone watching on TV wouldn't, they're really having a hard time sleeping, or they care to. So we're here after, so this year, we sat down and decided this is going, this, for a variety of reasons, was going to be the time. The operating, people hinted about it, our operating cycle has been declared unconstitutional for years, and nothing has been done about it. Never hear about levies in Kentucky or in Indiana. Doesn't happen. They have a different system. In Ohio, every three to four years, to fund our district, we have to go out and ask the public for more. It's always a problem in that it's the only tax you get to vote on. So it's a hard sell every time. We have a unique situation in that we have a timeframe right now to do something. Waiting, again, I've been there. In 2010, we waited. 2006, we waited. 2000, we waited. We've been waiting forever, waiting for that perfect plan that is, that solves all of our educational issues, solves all of our building issues, and is free. Doesn't happen. We're not, it's just not there. Nobody likes paying taxes, but you get what you pay for. Now, in our district, we have concentrated on the classroom. Later, we'll hear about some of the things that are going on in our buildings. It's horrible. It's horrible what's going on in our buildings right now. For the education our kids are getting, phenomenal, more AP successes than ever, ever. And these are in buildings that have raw sewage in them. These are buildings that kids have to go outside to go to the bathroom. And the scary thing is, is they like being in those because they have air conditioning. The preferred units are ones that they are outside, and in this day and age, you have an aluminum siding between the outside world and our kids. It's unbelievable that we are where we are, but we're here. We have a chance to make a difference. Not tonight, November 4th. We have a chance to make a difference, okay? Now, we went through, this process I see as different than every other one. Every other one I've been involved in, part of, has been kind of, well, the last one, it came on all at once. In fact, a lot of people didn't even know it was there. This has been 17 months, 15 meetings. A diverse group helped Dallas, a very diverse group. We're a diverse group, okay? All wanting the same thing, but we're different ideas on how to get there. Now we've come to a point, unlike any other time, too, is we've done something that, that Now we've come to a point, unlike any other time too, is we've done something that, we've asked, we've done unofficial surveys, we've done, you know, popularity polls, and they're all over the place. Like, well, it doesn't, one guy's voted 5,000 times. We heard that. So we said, you know what? We're doing something different this time. We're actually going to gauge community, what the community wants. It's something different. We had a night, and I think we were all there. We all, and as far as, we came up with two plans. They're very different plans. Both, I believe, address the needs of our district. I think both were to a point that we were all ready to support how it went. And the public helped us, okay? In the end, people ask, well, you know, what are you going to do? I'm not going to do anything. It's us. We have to do something, okay? The best plan in the world that doesn't get 51% is a horrible plan. It doesn't matter how great it is, okay? We're where we are now. We have a chance now to do something, not even for the next generation, for this generation. For the kids that are in our schools right now, that are having to deal with the rodents. I mean, the list is, when you look at it for our community, is troubling to say the least, that we've, we're where we are now. We've always been reluctant to go out because there's, nobody likes paying taxes. There's a lot of different ideas out there, and those are a lot of good ideas, but you know what? Eventually, things get lost in the shuffle and it gets pushed off. We can't keep pushing it off. We can't. We're going to be in a situation here that, guess what? Three years, you know, our levy cycle's back up. We're here. So, the, I see this plan as a complete renovation of our district. Do we get money, the benefits of consolidation, okay? No. No. We don't, you don't have the benefits. If you had four buildings instead of six buildings, there is, there are benefits there, absolutely. Do we get those? No. The upfront cost difference? $80 million. So, there's a trade-off. Does it save, does this plan save money out of our operating budget? Actually, it does because we have a PEI fund that we've never had before, okay? I know most of you have heard this, but we have always been a victim of our own success. Unlike any other district, we don't have a permanent improvement fund. We use our, the money that we could be using in the classroom to put roofs on the buildings, to put blacktop down, to paint the buildings. We have to do that. Now, we'll have a section of that that we'll be able to pull out of the operating fund and put toward our buildings, toward maintaining the buildings that we have. The, the other part of this, one of the questions, is it enough? Is it enough to do everything that we want to do? That's a good question. One of the things that we found through all of these meetings, there is a legal maximum that we can ask. The legal maximum is $107 million. That's all we can ask for. Now, what if you OFCC? Absolutely. It's all or nothing. You can go OFCC and follow their recommendations. That's $80 million more, or you say $70 million more, is what you'd have to ask the community. That's, you'd have to sell it. Now, it could be sold, but that's $70 million. And I know there's a lot of people that would say, hey, that's a lot of money. In fact, that's what we saw in full-scale market research, okay, Randy brings up. So, so here we are. So now we have a chance to do something that has not been done since 1970-whatever, okay? To completely change the look of our district, update everything, and help our kids, our kids now and the future generations to get the facilities they deserve. That was my three minutes.
I, I'm going to jump in after Forrest because I'm the processor. I like to, I listen and hopefully I don't say too much. And I've got this bullet point and we're going too fast. Forrest, I think you covered that, all right? We need to talk to more people. I think Forrest covered that. More educator input. I'm somebody who's been in the district in education for 18 years. I think I've talked to educators in five different buildings, not nine, but five, about this situation and what it takes for them to succeed. I love the fact that a Lindsay Stelter in the buildings that Forrest just described could have 60 out of 64 kids score fives on their AP. One of the things that I have great faith in is this community. I moved to Anderson Township for a reason and it's a great community, great parks, great schools. It has, I think we have the best of everything in Anderson Township and people are going to want to move here. We have families that care about kids. We have families that care about education. That isn't going to change. We have teachers that are some of the best in the city. We still have a school system that teachers want to come to. Tammy Carnahan could probably talk for a half an hour about the number of resumes that we get for every single position from all over the place of people who want to come here. So that's going to happen. I had a cousin that recently could have moved anywhere. He's actually working in Westchester, but moved to Anderson Township and drives to Westchester all the time to work because of, you know, traffic and all that kind of stuff that's going on out there. His little girls, Nyla and Laili, are both four years old or younger and we have an opportunity to do something for their schools so those four-year-olds can actually go into the schools and have nice buildings. I think I was not 100% quoted correctly when I talked about lipstick on a pig. I said this plan is not lipstick on a pig. I feel like this plan is more than double what the last plan was. When you go into buildings that have gone through this, I'm impressed by it. I love it. I think it will be noticeable. So I think with our community who values education, with our teachers who are great teachers in a district where people want to come to teach, let's give them some good buildings to walk into and let's do it at a rate that our community will support, proven by the community meetings we've had, proven by the community surveys that we've had. Let's do it. You know, I live in a house now that's 25 years old and we've already replaced our air conditioning. We've already replaced our roof. In a couple weeks, the window man's going to show up. We're replacing all the windows. I would like to just buy a new house somewhere, a nice new house. I can't afford it. Can't pay for it. And the house that I'm in's an awesome house and as we fix these things, it's still a great house. So now I know the hardwood floors are coming next and probably new carpeting or whatever it might be. But we're going to pay for it. We're going to stay where we are. We're going to love it. We're going to stay here. And so, you know, as far as educators go, the one thing I would like to see us do is what can we do? I know there's only a month left this summer, but what we, what can we do for some of them before this school year or early in this school year to make a difference in some of the areas that we've been talking about? I think that's important. What can we do right now? But what I'm afraid of is if we don't have this, if we don't go out in November, to what Forrest said, we will, we will have to wait till after the operating levy. And then, let's say we find the perfect plan that we haven't been able to find for 18 years now and we get it passed by the time those buildings are built or whatever happens. Now we're 25 years down the road. I mean, 25 years. Are you kidding me? Take 25 years off of your age right now and think about how much time that is. So I just, we can do this. It'll be meaningful. We have to have a group. We have to be on the same team. We have to all be working together. And if we are working together and we get out there and we get after it, I think we're going to be pleased with what we have. I'm sure of it. And I can't wait to see the results of all that work.
Julie?
Last Monday, we all had an opportunity to talk about our opinions of a plan and I think each of us spoke at length. I don't want to reiterate everything I said last Monday, but I would like to, for those of you who aren't here or for those who are watching on TV that didn't see the tape, I think it was played this past week, I'd like to reiterate some of the high points that I talked about. When we started this process, I wanted nothing more than to be a unanimous board. And I went in it with all the vim and vigor of having that happen. Jim and I talked about it even as the board leadership this past year. Jim was, Jim was the president, is the president, I'm the vice president. We talked about being a united team and going out and working toward the passage of a bond issue. And I have to tell you, you know, I sometimes get emotional and I think I'm going to tonight. I've lost, I've had many, many discussions over the months, and this isn't about me. Please don't think it is, but I will be probably the sole voter voting against this plan tonight. So I just, I just need to talk for a minute. I've talked to many, many people. I've thought about this. I've thought about it all different which ways. But I still have some concerns. I'm so close to being there, but I'm not quite there yet. I think if we had, I don't think it's now or never. I think it could be now or may. And I think we're really, really close, but we're not close enough that we have, in my opinion, the support of the community. And I think we could. We could have people like Maria and Elizabeth. We could have people that are leaders in the community that have a different opinion right now that would vote for this plan. And there was a, there was a time when they were so close. We were all so close and it just sort of fell apart. So the concerns that I still have are, let me just say a couple of positive things before I tell what my concerns are. I'm so proud of the school board for saying to the OFCC, go out and do your work. We haven't done that in a long time. We agreed to do that. We did it. And I'm very proud of that. I'm also really proud of us for having these discussions in public because, or having many discussions in public because every other facilities plan we've been involved in, I think all of us have been involved except maybe Tony because he's new, in one plan or another. Most of the work has been done in a superintendent's committee or a board committee, comes back to the board. We have maybe a couple of sort of personally discussions and then, I keep using this term, we chicken out. We don't do anything. So I'm really proud of the board for doing that. Third thing I want to say is I respect and care about each of you deeply. You know I do. This is the emotional me. I do. You're my friends. You're my colleagues. Some of you I've known for many, many years. Some, all of you I've known for many, many years. And I'm honored to serve with you. The, one of the telling things for me was we have the balanced study, then the OFCC report comes out, then we do another study. And the difference between what the first study told us and the second study is so telling in that from the first study, we get, we get the OFCC report and we start to educate the community. We talk to the community more. We're telling them, we're in dire need here. We need new facilities. So the results of the second survey are then that we hear you. The numbers have gone up in understanding. The numbers have gone up in support significantly. John Fox, who was our second, the second fellow that we had due the survey, told us that. So I think we can even do better. I think we can continue to educate the community about our needs. Left to our own devices, and I understand that market research is really important. I get it. I don't understand it like Randy understands it because he's really into it and I'm sort of on the branches of it. But I think that we could do, I think that we could continue to educate and I think that we could continue to have a bolder plan, a more visionary plan. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, I know what I was going to say. I think if you talk to board members, I think many of you talk to board members individually. I think most of us, if not all of us, would tell you, if we didn't have the community survey, we would be more inclined to go with a bolder plan. And so then the second thing that concerns me is, all right, we're elected to be leaders. We're elected to read more, study more, vet more, have more discussions. And we're elected to lead. We're elected to let others know what we know, tell others what we believe, and be bold. And someone said to me in an email this week, would we tell a doctor how to do surgery? Would we tell a doctor how to do surgery? Should a patient tell a doctor how to do surgery? I don't know if it's a good analogy or not, but I think it's up to us to be those bold leaders and to educate the community. I'm concerned that we've not chickened out, but I'm concerned that we've placed too much reliance on the surveys. What I don't see is any real, I've seen, I saw it more tonight than I've seen it, but even Randy on, a week ago Monday, went through all the reasons he was going to vote for the plan, but then he listed four or five concerns. So what I don't see is any real true excitement or passion or bold statements that we are positioning this district for the next generations of learning and teaching. There's no master plan for the future and that really concerns me. Are we making it better? Maybe. But again, the term of renovate to new, I just, I never liked that term. We're not renovating it to new under current standards. We don't have the money. I guarantee you, if you walk into New Wilson, which we all believe we need, if you walk into New Wilson and you've walked and renovated sure what it's going to be, apples and oranges, it's not going to be anything like the other. Are we renovating to new to put it back to the way it was when they were built in the 70s? I don't think we want that. And I don't even think we have enough money to do that. Another difficulty I have with this is that we haven't adequately reached out to speak with teachers and other stakeholders. I think Maria talked about the process. When Randy and I met with Joe, our consultant, he talked about going out, getting the bond issue passed, and then engaging stakeholders to talk about how we spend the money. And I asked some very specific questions. What about this in this building and this in this building? Well, we can do that. We can do that, but if we do that there, it means taking away some money from other places. So I don't think we have a clear vision of where the money's going to be spent. With Joe, I think Joe's a great guy. I've said that before. Joe seems very knowledgeable. Joe's done a lot of this kind of work. But we talked about as a board, with stewardship, ample ready, to have the work that Joe did reviewed by somebody else, at least one other person. And there have been people that have contacted us and said, I'll do it. I'll do it for free. And we never did that. And I said the other night, I took as much responsibility as anyone for not having that happen. We should have had that happen. You know, you wouldn't do a major renovation on your house without having at least a couple of people look at it. I still think we have time. Like I said, I think we're very, very close. I think we could get the vast majority of leaders in this community to reach out to others in the community and get this, get this done. If we don't have the support of our teachers and our parents, the vast majority of the support of our teachers and parents, this just isn't going to work. And I don't think we have it now. I think we need a little more time. Do I want to kick the proverbial can down the road? Another two or three years? Do not. But I think we should step back, engage those stakeholders, teachers, students, parents, the custodians in the buildings, maybe some former principals and administrators that have left who feel freer to talk than people that are currently here because there is some discomfort, let's face it, if you talk against or are in opposition to what your boss says. Not that Dallas would ever do anything to anybody, but it's an uncomfortable situation. We've all been in those situations. So I think we should step back. I think we should reverse the process, move forward, and look at next.
Randy?
Well, as I pointed out, how many years we've been looking at facilities. I've personally been following discussion for 16 years, been on the board for all of the various committees we've had. That's for 10 and a half years. And to me, this is an exciting day in the life of Forest Hills School District. We have a facilities plan that appeals to most of the 20% of people that have a direct connection to the school district. That's most of everybody in here. But importantly, most of the 80% that don't have connection, a direct connection to our school district. Even the 76% who don't have kids in school. I'm thinking of the 4% that are going to private schools. As Mrs. Bissinger pointed out, at the end of our work session last week... As Mrs. Bissinger pointed out, at the end of our work session last week, I listed a number of concerns about the proposed plans. And based on what I've learned over the last week, as well as, quite frankly, the last six weeks in talking with a lot of people, some of you in this room I've had one-on-ones with, I now feel confident enough to support what we call the low-cost plan. We learned a lot from the last bond issue. We made some mistakes. What we're doing here is not a big one. Let's face it, there were a lot of Band-Aids in the last one. This is a more comprehensive plan. It touches every building, even Nagel. It is a fiscally responsible plan. We're not tearing down building frames that can be rehabbed. The renovation plan is within our borrowing limits. As I think Dr. Heis pointed out, we're limited to $107 million unless we follow an OFCC building plan with additional government spending mandates. Even if we follow the mandates, we still have to borrow more money than the standard guidelines allow, and our property owners are on the hook to repay the debt. This represents a reasonable tax increase versus the high-cost plan. It'll upgrade our buildings so that our buildings will not become the barrier, Tony, as you were just pointing out earlier, to people moving into the Forest Hills area. We've heard from realtors. That's becoming an issue. Importantly, it'll help maintain our property values for all of our taxpayers. Here's another important point. The cost savings from the high-cost plan doesn't actually pay out. Even if we did get a million-dollar-year savings, you've got to remember, we have to borrow 72 more million dollars to achieve a building configuration that would allow that million dollars. You've got to remember, when we built Nagel, we were promised big savings, and that didn't actually happen. I'm not saying there wouldn't be some savings by consolidating, but that's reality. We can't change truth. That's exactly what happened. Another question was, is this enough money? Julia, I think you asked the question. We're borrowing at virtually our limit, and so it has to be. The question becomes then, how do we allocate? Where do we spend the money? And the other issue is, for somebody who's looking at the budget, if we put this decision off to next year, interest rates will almost certainly go up. If you watch what the Fed has done, what the signals are, I mean, nobody's got a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen, but it is likely to start costing us more to borrow the money. So that tells me now is the time to borrow the money. Another area that's been knocked around was the whole issue of, is this comprehensive? Well, I think that this is comprehensive. The last go-around was not. It addresses all the buildings in the district. And another issue that comes up is reorganization, and we have not been presented a proven reorganization In the '70s, we bought off on some fads, not in reorganization, but in building design. It was called open classroom. It wasn't really proven. We were spending money at Turpin to make changes shortly after the building was built. So if we had a proven design that somebody had passion to present, but I haven't seen that in 16 years. There are a lot of different design ideas, but we haven't seen anything that was actually proven. Another thing that's come up is, is this a long-term solution? Well, it will meet our needs for 20, 30 years out. Thinking 40 years out, education delivery is going to change in this country, in this state, probably in this city. So to lock and load on something that we think has to work for us for 40 years out, I think the technology that's come along, education delivery is going to change. So as long as we've got something that'll meet our needs for 20, 30 years out, we should be in good shape. Another issue that's come up is the whole idea of 21st century learning environment. I've learned over the past few months that 21st century learning is really more about technology, curriculum, and teacher technique than it is about buildings. This plan will be able to address some of the 21st century learning issues that have to do with buildings. For example, small group learning spaces, collaborative learning areas, special needs interests, updating existing classrooms in addition to state-of-the-art technology upgrades, which we all know that we need. Another area, safety. This plan includes the safety improvements that would be irresponsible not to address now. We've had this discussion. We know what needs to be done. We haven't done anything. That needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. Another question or topic that's come up has been the process. Looking at the process that other districts have followed, they first get a rough idea of what facilities need to be addressed. And by the way, we do have a line item. Julie and I, we've all seen it, but Julie and I went over it in detail with Joe. A line item, budget for what's needed by building. Right now, it's still at the, call it the 100,000-foot level. Once they know the amount of money they have to invest, that's when the timelines that I saw, they develop more detailed groups, including importantly, teachers, to evaluate and put together a more detailed plan. I know that there are some people that believe in their heart that the high-cost plan is best for our school district. For those people, I respect your opinion, but because I believe it will not pass our voters, I just don't believe that's the right choice. I'm aware that there are some people that are pushing for the high-cost plan because they believe it won't pass, and I really think that's unfortunate also. I think that's a very unfortunate agenda. The low-cost plan does represent a compromise. Quite frankly, it's not the plan that I would have picked, but we can afford to replace all of our buildings with new buildings like some districts have been able to do. We just don't get the state aid that some districts do. I've personally visited over a dozen renovated buildings, and based on what I've seen with my own eyes, this plan can meet our needs. Maybe not all of our wants, but it should address our needs. There was discussion at our last meeting about what teachers want. I thought that was important. I've talked with a number of teachers, administrators, over the past six weeks and over the past week. Every person I spoke with realizes that something needs to be done soon, and quite frankly, every person I spoke with, except one, supports the renovation plan. Some of them were very enthusiastic supporters. Many recognize the need to do things that will ultimately lower operating costs, but most support the renovation plan. If we're able to come together as a community and support our districts, our kids will have the facilities they need. They'll have the STEM space, the science labs they need now. We'll have the safety upgrades we need now. And as was pointed out earlier, because of the levy cycle, if we're not able to pass this bond issue, we'll be dooming our students to mediocre buildings who will only get worse. Because of the levy cycle again, if we don't pass this bond issue, the result will be a two- to four-year sentence for our students and teachers to have to make do with existing and declining buildings. Do we support the district? Do we support our students? Do we support our teachers? Do we support a responsible plan? I choose to support my district, our district. And I would remind everybody about something I mentioned last time, the thought of flat We've all seen a road where you've got a flat squirrel, where the squirrel couldn't make a decision. Indecision causes flat squirrels. We don't want to be the flat squirrel of school districts. It's time to make a decision, and we've got to all run to the same side of the road. And so for that, I would say, I would ask for your consideration, even if this plan is not your ideal, please consider it. Thank you.
So I'm last. We have an urgent need to address the district facilities. This last year, as already been mentioned, we had raw sewage in the halls at both Anderson and Turpin High Schools. There's mice at Anderson. They're eating the kids' lunches. Both Anderson and Turpin have bugs. The high school science labs for our district are embarrassing. There's no air conditioning at Anderson, Maddox, or Summit. Temperatures at these buildings can approach 100 degrees in the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year. Ask your kids. We have children in trailers at both Maddox and Wilson. They've been there at Wilson for, by anybody's account, 20 years and more. We've come to think of it as the norm. We forget they're even there. And even worse, at Wilson is the preferable learning space. Even though the kids have to go outside to go to the bathroom, they'd rather be in the trailers than in the building. Wilson is literally crumbling. Handicap access in all the buildings except for Nagel is atrocious. At Summit, there's parts of the building that can't even be reached if you're in crutches or in a wheelchair. And none of the buildings, not one of them, has a security vestibule, notwithstanding what we've seen happen in other parts of the country. And what's worse, these conditions are nothing new. The board has been aware of these conditions for more than 18 years, and while facilities have been a regular topic of discussion, for one reason or another, any plan to remedy the problem has been postponed, year after year after year. No one has been able to present a plan to our voters, except for last year's $47 million plan that was voted down. You didn't want something? We worked hard, and we're bringing you something else. The facility decisions have been postponed, as you've heard, for one reason or another, the high school consolidation debate, timing considerations such as the proximity to the operating levy, or for other reasons. Whatever the reason, the delays have continued year after year after year, for now going on 18 years. That continued decline in the facilities is also placing a huge financial strain on the district's operating budget. We've never had a permanent improvement fund in this district. The district has paid for the maintenance of our facilities from the operating budget. This has become increasingly difficult, often resulting in deferring the needed repairs and maintenance, or even worse, doing nothing at all. In the meantime, the buildings continue to deteriorate. The condition of our facilities would be an embarrassment to any community. It's particularly embarrassing for a high-performing and relatively affluent district like Forest Hills. The deteriorating facilities are impacting our education to our children. They're harming the property values, and our children deserve better. Of course, every plan costs money. The board looked at facility plans that ranged in cost from $98 million to $209 million. The plans looked at a wide variety of building configurations. Those of you that have been coming to the meetings, you heard us talk about the different plans. We looked at plans that included consolidation at the high school level. We looked at plans that considered consolidation at the elementary school level. We looked at a two-middle-school plan. We considered plans that consolidated...the plans all had financial constraints, both practical and legal ones. Legally, we are precluded from law from borrowing more than 9% of the assessed value of the real estate in our district. For Forest Hills, that limits us, you've heard this number, to borrowing no more than $107 million for our current facility needs. We could exceed that limit if the value of the property in the district had increased by more than 1.5% per year over the last five years. It hasn't happened, probably anywhere in the country, given the recent economic problems. It certainly hasn't happened in Forest Hills. We therefore looked at a plan that allows us to renovate all of the buildings and build a new Wilson for a cost of less than $107 million. Legally, that's all we can do, unless we look at a plan that meets the OFCC standards. That's the Ohio Facilities Construction Committee. They have a standard. It is not the standard, it is a standard. There are other standards. Under the OFCC guidelines, we could do a plan, and we looked at a plan. The cost was $173 million, $70 million more than the other plan that we're currently considering. And we truly considered that plan. What we did is we decided to hire a marketing expert. We retained a gentleman by the name of John Fox. Some of you heard his report. If you're not familiar with him, I would suggest you go to the board, the district website. His presentation is online. You can watch it for yourself. John Fox is an expert in this area. He presented his preliminary survey results to us on June 9th and the final results on June 19th, and his presentation, as I said, was excellent. You can look at it in line. Mr. Fox explained his survey results to us, and he told us they had a sampling error of plus or minus 4.4% and gave us a 95% confidence level. In other words, we can rely on what he's telling us. He's an expert. He applied the science, and we listened to his report. And based on those survey results, we learned 59% of our voting community supports the lowest, lower-cost plan 27% strongly. Only 40% of our voting community supported the higher-cost plan 16% strongly. And on comparison of the plans, only 17% favored the higher-cost plan. During his presentation, and again, you can look at it online, I pushed Mr. Fox. I asked him, "What's the likelihood of pushing the needle on the 40% that support the higher-cost plan to something over 51%?" And what he said is, "When they go to the voting booth, the percentage is going to go down." And so what he told us, and I quote, "There is cautious optimism in the results of this research, with the community clearly preferring the lower-cost plan with six elementary schools over the higher-cost plan with four elementary schools." He told us, and I pushed him on this, "You're not going to pass the higher-cost plan with a 40% support. Only the lower-cost plan with 59% support gives you cautious optimism, not even a clear indication that it'll pass." So we're left with a choice. It is either proceeding with the lower-cost plan that 59% of our voting community supports, a plan that renovates eight buildings and gives us a new Wilson, or doing nothing at all. Doing nothing is not an option. In the last school board election, there were four candidates, and every single one of those four candidates said facilities was the most important issue facing the district. In our January board meeting, we all agreed we had to do something about facilities. Earlier this evening, we reviewed the board priorities, and you saw right up there on the screen. The board decided facilities was a priority, and we were going to try to do something by the November ballot. We've done it. We all agreed back in January. They all agreed when they were running for school board that doing nothing was not an option. We all committed to the public, we were going to do something to address our facility needs. So we've worked for the last six and a half months diligently on facilities. Dr. Jackson, Rick Tepfer, Ray Johnson, Dr. Jackson's Facility Committee, and Joe Kunkel, and not just Joe Kunkel, but he is a member of SSOE, one of the largest architecture firms in the state of Ohio with, I believe, 450 professionals. All of them worked on this plan. We've had 15 public meetings. This is number 16, all in the scope of six and a half months. We have beat the heck out of this. We've done our due diligence. We surveyed our voting committee, our voting community, and today, 59% of that voting committee is in favor, community is in favor of the lower-cost plan in which we renovate the two high schools, the middle school, and five of our six elementaries with a new Wilson. If we do not move forward now because of an operating levy cycle, we may have another three to five years or more before we can meaningfully address our facility needs. In the meantime, we'll have sewage in the buildings. We'll have bugs. We'll have mice. We'll have no air conditioning, and all the other things are addressed. And worse, those buildings will continue to deteriorate. Now is the time to act. The plan we've developed is a good one. It has exhaustive renovations of all the buildings based on the needs of each building. $25.5 million to be spent at Anderson High School. $22.6 million to be spent... $25.5 million to be spent at Anderson High School, $22.6 million to be spent at Turpin High School, $4.8 million each at Sherwood and Air, they have similar, they actually bookends, they're the same building configuration, $6.2 million at Maddox, $5.7 million at Summit, $7.5 million at Mercer, a new Wilson, and even work at Nagel. All of the buildings are getting significant renovations with the new Wilson. It is renovation to new, it's meaningful, and I truly am excited about this, as I hope is our community. Forrest said, it's been a long time coming. It absolutely has. Now is the time to vote for this. I'm absolutely going to support it this evening, and I hope, all we can do is put it on the ballot. I hope our voting community truly gets behind us as they said they would in the survey, and we can pass this in November. So, if there's no further discussion, we've had a motion. Mr. Tepfer?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Helmgarn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Items 9.1 through 13.2 will be consent agenda items. 9.1, Ms. Ryan?
Student Services has two items this evening. The first item, 9.1, is a foreign exchange student. We are recommending approval for a foreign exchange student from Germany, Enrico Marana Weller, to attend Turpin High School for the 2014-15 school year. All information has been reviewed, and Enrico's host family information is also included in this item. For item 9.2, the Superintendent is recommending approval for the Educational Services Agreement between St. Joe's Orphanage, Altercrest Treatment Center, and Forest Hills. And as indicated in that agreement, Forest Hills is responsible for providing educational services to students with disabilities who reside at Altercrest. The agreement also outlines a daily rate billable to the placing school districts and the procedural requirements for educating students with disabilities is also included.
Thank you. Item 10.1, supplemental books for English Language Arts, Ms. Adams?
I'll begin by following up on items from last month's meeting, and 10.1 is supplemental books for ELA. The Superintendent recommends that the Board approve these books for our English Language Arts class. They're listed here in your agenda, and these have been on display in our office since June 23rd. Item 10.1 is the collection...
I did my Tracy Hubner impersonation, and I actually read one of them. The outliers.
Bonus.
It was interesting.
Topic 10.2, collections textbook and close reader for English grades 7 through 11. Superintendent recommends that the Board approve this textbook and close reader for our English classes in grades 7 through 11. It has also been on display since June 23rd in our Board office. Item 10.3 is the St. Joseph Orphanage and Altercrest Service Agreement for the 2014-15 school year, and we ask that you approve this service agreement between us and the orphanage at Altercrest, and this has been listed in your attachment, all the details. 10.4, our new text, this gives you some more reading opportunities, Dr. Heiss, for July. We'd like to display the book, The Secret Lies of Bees and the Lonely Bones, for our Love and Relationship class for grade 12. These supplemental books will be available on review in our department for the month until August 25th, that we'll come back to for approval.
That's not one of my favorite genres.
Okay.
Well, I actually went on and looked at the summary of those, and they seemed a little dark, but if you are recommending them, I trust you.
We're working to engage the seniors.
I know.
And finally, this last, I want to speak a little bit more about item 10.5. Dr. Jackson alluded to it a little bit earlier. You know, starting in 2010, we went down the path of power-up and bringing your own device to the students of Nagel Middle School, and then over the years, it has continued to expand to our students, and now we're 7 through 12, Bring Your Own Laptop. We've kind of gotten to a place, due to the evolvement of our teaching and learning styles, due to the fact that, you know, when we first started at Nagel, kids were walking around binders and notebooks and all this stuff, plus the laptop, and over time, that continues to shrink down because of all of the online resources that are available to our students. We find, through our work and through our research, that students who have their own personal learning environment and can take it home with them, have it with them, and be part of their life 24/7, are more successful. And as you know, the state testing is moving to online, and so we want to make sure that the fluency of our students is very strong. And so, you know, probably shocking several years ago was the request to have a $100 calculator required to the school supply list. Now we are saying we're going to require a device as part of the school supply list. And because of the price of devices, that's really a much more feasible opportunity at this time in our evolvement. And so, to support that and to continue to grow our program, we're going to charge a $100 fee for students who choose not to participate in the power-up initiative. And so that's what we're asking about today. We are asking that you approve a $100 fee that we would give to students in just grades 7 through 12, who will be using Forest Hills School District devices instead of bringing their own devices to school. And we plan to begin a communication effort very soon here in August, and give students and parents all the way until January before a fee like this would be assessed, so they have time to plan. And this would be our first step in allowing our devices to go home with students, because that is kind of the missing piece that's been going on, kind of a hiccup in our plan, is that students have had just access during the day. And we really believe in that 24/7 access for ultimate success. So, that's what our request is today.
Do you have a plan to handle for...
Who's first?
I'll ask that second. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do you have a plan for economically disadvantaged students?
Yes, we do.
Three. Okay, so that will be handled somehow?
Yes, we'll take care of that. Students will not go without devices. We have enough in our supply to take care of all of our students. We just want to continue to ramp up our program, and we want to be able to take this extra step of being allowed kids to take them home, and that's something we just haven't been able to do until now.
Julie, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I think we got this updated our Board package.
You did?
Here's my question. I feel like I'm missing, I feel like it's obvious and I'm missing it. If a child chooses not to use a device, how do we know they're not just not using a device? Do you know, I mean, if they don't have...
You mean like the doggy my homework kind of stuff? Is that what you're talking about?
If I don't want to bring my own, I don't have my own, and how do you know if I need one to pay the $100 for? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because my son does not use his device, doesn't use a device in school very often.
One of the issues with that, in my estimation, is really is that we're at that tipping point, is that teachers can't really fully change how they do business until everybody's up and running, and everybody's up and running 24/7. So this is kind of the tipping point place.
That's a pretty good answer.
And it's just our reality. It will continue to change, and you're going to see, especially those students, like next year's senior class are the only students who did not go through Nagel and experience the power-up. And so each class comes with a greater set of knowledge, and this year, even our sixth graders started this. So, it's going to continue to ramp up. The necessity for being skilled and fluent with your computer skills is going to grow. We're going to be able to assess that through our, the Next Generation Assessment System, and so it will just continue to change.
It's a snowball effect.
It really is, and it is exciting, though. It's, it sounds a little bit overwhelming, but we've really, we've grown to this place, and we were, you know, in the forefront in doing this, and it's just time to take that next step, and we will support our students in doing that.
Great, thank you.
And all these devices, and Rick, this is probably more a question for you, they'd be covered under our insurance, I presume?
Correct.
Is the deductible such that it makes any...
No.
They're for all practical purposes uninsured, then, when they're taking them home?
Correct, but we have, part of the agreement with our parents will be, you know, any, anything that needs to be parent-paid will be handled that way. I think the goal with the $100, it's about a $400-$500 device, and that gives it the, you know, a useful life of roughly four years, so that's where that money came into play.
Well, and if you put it into, we've done this in our own minds, put it into perspective, like we allow students to take home an instrument that's up in the price, so if you make it equal like that, it kind of makes sense. We've been doing that for years, and it's, you know, the cost has come down so much that it's just not such an outrageous thing to think about as it used to be.
Thank you. Human Resources Report, Ms. Carnahan?
Good evening. We do have a lengthy report this evening. It is the busy time in Human Resources. Item 11.1, A, we have resignations from certified as well as classified staff. Item B is an exhibit that is the Administrator-Employee Benefit Package that we continue to evolve and bring back to you for some tweaks. Item C is an exempt salary schedule change for now, until 2017. Item D is a correction. We have an employee who was put on the wrong step, and we are going to correct that this evening with your approval. Item E, we see change of assignment, and these are current employees that are just going to be having different assignments next year. Moving on to item G, appointments, administrators, and we do have some of our administrators with us this evening. So, John Eckert is here. John?
Lieutenant.
John is going to be joining us as the Coordinator of Special Programs, Climate, and Culture. And so John has most recently been a principal at Claremont Northeastern, and we're very excited to bring him on. Anita Eschleman, I don't think Anita's here this evening, is Elementary Programs Coordinator. Megan Gilman, Coordinator of Special Programs, Diverse Learners. Megan Lawson, Megan is with us this evening. She is going to be our Data and Assessment Coordinator. It's under curriculum, but is also really a branch of our Student Services as well as technology, so lots of different departments working together very collaboratively. And Megan most recently came to us from Loveland, where she was an assistant principal at the middle school. And Susan Monk, who has been with the district, is moving into an administrative position. Continuing on page three, these are additional appointments. Item H, special services appointments, and these are part-time. Item I, sorry, these are coaches, our consultants, advisors, and you will see several pages And going on to, sorry, page number seven, where we have our substitute personnel. Again, this is the time of year that we are appointing substitutes for the coming school year. Just a reminder, you do not see substitute teachers here, because we are in a partnership with Hamilton County and Claremont County Consortium to provide substitute teachers for us for the coming year. Item K is Vacation Compensation Exhibit. Item L is a memorandum of understanding with our Forest Hills Teachers Association. Very briefly, we've been working with the Teachers Association collaboratively to put together a supplemental package, looking at being very competitive within this area. And Mrs. Lawver's with us this evening, and even though we're not quite there yet, the memorandum that you have in front of you this evening will allow us to add golf and tennis at Nagel Middle School, and we're hearing that that is very desired by our athletic directors, so thanks to the FHA for their cooperation and collaboration. The FTE has not changed since the last Board meeting, it stands at 770.95, and we will do a reconciliation for September that lets you know what the changes are based on, just positions that have been added or taken away over the year. And the Superintendent recommends the Board approve.
Thank you. Business operations, Mr. Johnson is on vacation, and Mr. Tepfer will be addressing those with us this evening. 12.1?
Correct. 12.1 is a change order in our favor, where once we had installed the phone systems, both our equipments as well as our monthly usage have been adjusted, so this adjusts the lease agreement with Cincinnati Bell. The item 12.2 is, I guess we did many of these at the last meeting, but this is the additional one at Wilson, modular classroom, which expires and requires an additional lease, and it was recommended that we shoot a 24-month lease extension to that, which will coincide with whatever we're doing facility-wise. We could even, you know, extend that a little bit if we need to, towards the back end. But this lease agreement's with ModSpace, 24-month extension. The 12.3 item is an annual item we do with the ME Lions YMCA latchkey program. We've had similar fees for many years, so we have a small increase there for the latchkey program, which is housed in our buildings before and after school in our elementary buildings. And 12.4 is a request to advertise, to start the process really with the Turpin High School synthetic turf field. This will allow Ray to get started, you know, on the plans. Keep in mind, this is using the rental dollars, so there's no tax dollars being used for this process or project at all. The target that we're shooting for is really somewhere in the December through February, 15 timeframe, to get the work done. That will also give us the best price. So it'll be the, somewhere between 12.1 of 14 and 215 of 15 is kind of the target for this work, so he'll start the process to get this moving right away. So those are, those are the business operation items. Moving on to 13.1 is the 2014 Permanent Appropriations. We took the temporary appropriations to the Board last month. This is asking the Board to approve our permanent appropriations at the fund level, which is the legal limit, the legal level allowed, the total for all funds for this coming year, The largest is our operating budget of $75.8 million, and we are asking the Board to adopt the resolution listed in 13.1 detailing the July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015 Permanent Item 13.2, we have our donations, statement of Board accounts, no surprises there, we just started the fiscal year, our general fund receipts, functions and objects. I did recap this to the Board last week, kind of the ending, where we both ended the year with a under-expenditure, as well as received some additional revenue. So all those will be summarized in a lot more detail when we update the five-year forecast. So, two positives, we didn't spend everything and we got more money. So those are both, in a nutshell, we obviously will, we'll put that into the five-year forecast and see what the net-net result is. But our, and obviously, a past bond issue would help that additional, because we have currently about $600,000 a year moving via Board transfer from the operating budget to the permanent improvement account to allow us to do the day-to-day major facility, roofs, blacktops, windows, doors, those kinds of things that all of our facilities need in their current state, and those have been really just hitting the high priorities for many years. And item, well, D and E, we have the expenditures by function and object. Our F, monthly bank reconciliation, purchase of investments, outstanding purchase orders for ending June 30, 2014, statement of interest earnings. Asking, and item J, asking the Board for a transfer. This is an annual transfer that we make from the general fund to the athletic fund for their transportation of the previous year, as well as we do fund the reconditioning of equipment. Obviously, with the major emphasis on concussions and so forth, we do not want to have anything but fully load that budget to make sure that we have the, you know, those helmets and the equipment in great working order every fall, so we fund that for our athletic budgets. And item K and L, we have new student activity funds, and we're closing an activity fund. And N, we're asking the Board to, again, approve our partnership with RAN Associates as our agent of record. They work with us, our whole team, on all of our benefit offerings, as well as the marketplace and everything we do from a competitive standpoint. Been a great partner for many years, and we value that. Item O, we have our Board Service Fund. We're asking the Board to approve that. We're asking the board to approve that, which allows for board professional development for this year. So that money is available. You can contact me or Connie in my office, and we will set up anything that you might need for this coming year. It's recommended the board approve that report. And then the entire motion would be items 9.1 through 13.2 as presented by our whole team.
I move that we do approve 9.1 through 13.2.
Second.
The case of course, you go.
Well, I just bring you up my monthly comment about, we talk about the, why we need a PI fund. And a long time ago, someone in this room helped set up a way that we did not have to go to taxpayers for the money. We spent about $1 million a year on interest, or interest money. So we didn't have to come to the public, because we had $1 million every year in interest. Now, a million roughly divided by 12, a little bit less than 90,000 a month. Our total interest for the month of July. Remember, 90,000 a month, 40 bucks. $40 is what we're getting in interest. And it's been like that since 2008, 25 to $40.
It has gone up a little bit.
Yeah, it was 25 bucks in February. Yeah, so the 13 extra dollars, I don't know, is going to make, change our five-year forecast. But, but yeah. I like bringing that up when it comes up, because that's one of the reasons why we're here where we are.
Rick, can I ask a question? And if you don't know the answer, maybe Jim or Andy does. Or I guess D's gone. D's here. We've got a donation from Forest Hills Foundation for $8,600. What, is that for a specific project?
Yeah, I think Dallas can speak to that. I think it's a couple of our student projects.
Yes, some of that. And I want to thank D and the foundation for all that they do for our school students. But this is primarily to fund the 24/7 program at the middle school. In the past, they've also funded our DI program. And also, they are working very handily in helping our kids with their, getting ready for the ACT and the SAT classes and tests they're taking, as well as others. So we appreciate that donation. Thank you, D.
Question on the trailer lease. I saw that went up a certain amount of money per month. Are we getting anything for that? Or is that just the penalty for having more students in the building?
Some of that, it's just the age and the wear and tear in that lease. I mean, it hasn't changed at all. So no, there's no change to that. It's the size and capacity, it's always been. Used differently in all of our buildings, but I think it's going to be, hopefully, out there forever.
Hopefully. Another question to Dr. Heiss's comment. You mentioned $600,000. So that is money, if this PI passes, that could then be spent on programs instead of...
Would not be transferred, yeah. I mean, we will probably bring that to the board this fall, the actual transfer. If you look at a half mil PI, I think it's $624,000. So it's roughly the equivalent of what that is on an annual basis. So that would replace, you know, or put it in some terms, it's a half a mil, you know, of future operating levy needs, too. So there's, how to look at that from a future standpoint.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Helmigarn?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Reports to the Boards of Education. Mr. Tepfer, the Business Advisory Committee?
I've not had a meeting since the last meeting. I just scheduled a meeting, which you'll be getting noticed for on Monday, August 4th, 7 o'clock. So we'll have a meeting in two weeks from today, I believe.
Item 14.2 is the report from the Forest Hills Foundation for Education. The foundation had its alumni golf outing just this last Saturday, July 19th, and they had 43 foursomes. And somebody actually got a hole-in-one. I don't know who that was. I know it...
His name was Nate Friend. He's a 1994 graduate.
Is that Josh Gerth's class? Oh, wow. So it wasn't Josh, though?
It was not Josh. I heard he did not play very well.
Is he still here?
He's not here. Can't defend himself.
You know, I understand he's terrible golf.
As long as he's not here. But I believe eight or nine, class of '94 graduates, from their reunion on Saturday.
So 43 foursomes, that's great. It was a wonderful event. The, there is a big event being, a yet-as-unnamed big event scheduled for November 15th. Look for information on that. It's going to be a fundraiser at the home of Joe Marinick. I've never seen the place. I understand it's spectacular, so look for details on that. The foundation is in planning, and on September 6th, they'll be doing a mini camp for the Destination Imagination, getting the team leaders educated so they can move forward. The college prep classes will continue. And this year, they hope to do interview skills classes for the high school students to assist them in interviewing for college jobs, for college and for jobs. The Nagel After School Program, which is the one that Dr. Jackson just discussed, they're hoping to expand that. They'd like to do at least one additional day if they're able to do so. And they're also looking to recruit high school students as tutors for that program as well. And, oh, and the Distinguished Alumni Event will be on October 10th of 2014. And they expect to announce the finalists for that award within the next couple of weeks. Legislative Liaison, Randy?
I met with Representative Stauberg a little over a week ago, and he gave me an update on education activity in the state. There are a lot of moving parts in that area. And that's actually unfortunate, because it makes it very difficult for our district administrators to be able to plan if they keep changing the target. Dr. Jackson mentioned the change in the administrator evaluation. That's just one of the things that's in play. And one of the other things that he mentioned was the whole Common Core issue, which is a challenge. There's pressure to make change in Columbus. And what I simply shared with him is, school districts are in a difficult position, because we are subject to whatever the state determines as far as what our standards will be. And my plea to him was, is don't leave school districts in the lurch. There have been standards for a long time. And, you know, we have to, we, meaning the district has to, you know, work with the standards that they have accepted. And we don't have the people, the money, the time to be able to create our own standards. So we'll see how that plays out at Columbus. Beyond that, that's all I have for report.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson, Policy Committee Report?
Yes, Policy Committee Report. The Policy Committee, which consists of two board members, Randy and Julie, met on June 9th. We basically only talked about one particular policy, and that was our attendance policy. It's Attendance Policy 5200. With that, we made some tweaks and changes of that as shared with us from Neola, as well as some, just tweaking of some changes with the Ohio Revised Code and our own little. And really, the changes come down to two particular areas. And that is in how we go about talking about truancies and unexcused absences and those types of things. What the changes are primarily is it gives us a little bit more flexibility. In the past, we had to wait quite a long time before we could actually even send a parent a letter sharing with them that, you know, that their child is either truant or has missed too many days of school. And now that it's given us some more flexibility with that, and we can take action a little quicker. Our goal is to make sure that kids are in session as much as possible. And we understand that there are a lot of things that come up, and this policy addresses that, like illnesses and extended trips and those types of things. But at the same time, our goal is, is to educate a child, they need to be in school. So primarily, that's what this policy is. We then, on the regular meeting on the, on June 23rd, we met and for the first read, and then we're bringing this to the board today. And I'm recommending that the board pass the Policy 5200 regarding student attendance.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Helmigarn?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 14.5 is a SAGA report, but there was no SAGA meeting in July, so there's nothing to report. Item 15.1 is Executive Session.
Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1,